Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, both audio and video, and will be posted on the district website. The first item on the agenda is the discussion and approval of the minutes from the October 28th, 2025 meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So move second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Member Carrillos?
Yes.
Member Marquez?
Yes.
Member Nilla?
Yes.
President Diki?
Yes. Motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. I'm first going to start with our personnel update. We have no retirements at this time. I would like to announce a new hire and welcome to the Webster Public Schools, Mr. Scott Calhoun, who will be a paraprofessional at Bartlett High School. We did have a couple of resignations. We had Leah Dufault, who was an ABA at Park Ave Elementary, and Mr. Scott Williams, who was a custodian at Bartlett High School. We wish them the best of luck in their future endeavors. And there are no transfers at this time. And as you can see with vacancies, we are still struggling with the hire of paraprofessionals and ABAs. We currently actively have posted the Adjustment Counselor that we announced at the last meeting and the custodian position. So, you know, hopefully we'll be filling those shortly. We continue to post our ABAs and update as soon as possible. Whenever we get new candidates, we're interviewing and doing our best to get them in, but it continues to be a struggle to fill those positions. Is there any questions about personnel? No? Great. Moving on under Instructional Update, I am very happy to see that we have some guests with us here this weekend. I mean, tonight on Tuesday, not this weekend. My mind is going to... Thanksgiving break is almost here. We're going to get there. But I'm thrilled to have Mr. Nathan Cole, student at Bartlett High School, and his family here with us this evening. I am happy to announce that Mr. Cole will be receiving the Academic Certificate of Academic Excellence Award along with the Superintendent's Scholar. The purpose of distributing this award in the fall is so that, you know, typically awards are given in the fall. I mean, in the spring when you're graduating. And this way, when we do it in the fall, MASs, it allows the students to put it in any college applications and add it to your resume as you're looking forward to your next step. As an educational leader in the community, a Mass Association of School Superintendents has designated the Award for Academic Excellence. These awards will be given to high school students across the state who have in pursuit of their excellence during their high school careers. The three criteria for these awards is three-year cumulative average rank in class, a personal selection by the superintendent, and a heavily weigh within the 5% of the class, in the top class. So this year's recipient is Nathan. Nathan Cole is a high-achieving senior who currently holds the top rank in his graduating class. He's maintained the number-one position throughout his junior year and continues to lead academically as a senior. Nathan is enrolled in the manufacturing pathway and is gaining valuable technical experience through an IT internship with the local middle school. A dedicated scholar, Nathan has consistently earned honor roll distinction every quarter of his high school career. He challenges himself academically, having completed one AP course as a junior, and expanding his coursework to three AP courses in his senior year. That's awesome. In addition to his academic excellence, Nathan is an active leader in his school community. He has been a member of the National Honor Society since his junior year and currently serves as the NHS president, exemplifying his commitment to scholarship, leadership, service, and character. In addition, Nathan was a part of the team that helped Bartlett win this year's PLTW Award. Nathan's blend of academic achievement, leadership, and hands-on technical experience reflects his strong work ethic and dedication to excellence in all pursuits. As part of this recognition, Nathan is also invited to attend the Worcester County Superintendent Association Annual Scholar Recognition with Ms. Nevez and myself in the spring of 2026. So that's a luncheon we'll attend at the end of March, early April, where students across the state get recognized from Central Mass. So I'd like to give you the certificate, Nathan, and congratulate you and say thank you very much for being the best of Bartlett. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. That is no easy feat, and it is wonderful to see Nathan around the schools. I was over at the middle school and I seen him firsthand at work, working on the Chromebooks and helping out over there. He is always so very polite, you know, just represents the best of what we have here at Bartlett. So I'm going to thank you for that, Nathan. And I'll open it up to school committee.
Congratulations, Nathan, and congratulations to your mom and dad, too. I'm sure that it's a group effort when it comes to raising such a wonderful human being, and it's nice to hear all the great things that you're doing at Bartlett. Congratulations. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Also, thank you so much, Nathan, and congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And we look forward to our luncheon in the spring. You're probably saying, I get to spend the day with you. Ms. Nevez, not a real treat, but it's a treat for us.
It'll be fun.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Such a nice young man. So on Wednesday, November 5th, moving on in my report, we met with our SaaS consultants, those are statewide systems consultants, who discussed what kind of support we can receive in the upcoming year. So it looks like they've changed their model once again. So they have changed over the past couple of years. They're going back to their older model. The model that they were doing last year was more individualized coaching, and they focused on one area, one school, and they did, I guess I want to say, very targeted work in their approach. And they backed off from providing professional development support and doing some of that. So they are going back to a previous model where they are allowed to work with us with more than one building, so they can attend all our buildings, walk through with us, be a part of our meetings again, and give additional support and advice on some of our meetings. They are also starting to focus on student voice, which I think is a great thing. It's always important to have student voice, and so that's another area that they're going to add to their focus and work with us on. The new commissioner, who has come in, has expanded the role a little bit as he believes that's a critical piece that is missing at the state level of getting student voice. So we look forward and welcome that, and we look forward to continue on our work with And as a treat, we just received notification that we have been chosen to participate in another review. The Office of Public School Monitoring, the PSM, conducts a review in the areas of special education and civil rights through a process called Integrated Monitoring Review. So I just received this notification. This year, they have selected 114 districts across the state, and we were one of the lucky recipients. It feels like we just got over our TFM, and we will be starting anew. So for the upcoming school year, '26, '27, we have Group A of our TFM. We will be focusing on civil rights assessment '11, '12, and '13. So we have a webinar that will be attending in January that'll describe what we need to do, what we can expect for the upcoming year. So as we get closer to that and once we have more information, I will pass that along. So that'll be happening already for next year. Moving on, an update that came out today. I added this late on my report. A big thing that was happening across the state from Desi today, we spoke previously about staff attendance, and we knew that the state was collecting data on staff attendance. They've been doing that for the last couple of years. That data is collected through our EPUMS, our Employee Educator Management Information System. So we submit that annually, three times a year, like we do with all of our other state reporting. Part of that reporting is staff attendance. This is the first year that it is going public. So data was released on school profiles today with staff attendance. They are looking at... I printed out a little report here. Staff attendance rates, they're looking at rates and the average number of absences. So at a school level, we received reports by individual schools. We can look at total numbers for individuals, and it's broken down more at the district level and at the state level. They're just looking at staff and administrative attendance, and then looking at average attendance. So in your packet, I had put, you should have this, but it was added later today. This is Webster's rates for this year. So we are pretty in line with the state averages. I can tell you that all staff attendance rate for Webster was 91.9%. At the state level, it was 93.4. So we're not too far off. We're just a little below. For the administrators, our attendance rate was 95.5, and at the state average, it was 94.5. So we were above the average there with attendance. And then looking at our teacher attendance, if we're just looking at teachers, it was at 92% in Webster, and the state average is 93.5. So we're just a little bit below average there at attendances. It also looks at your average number of absences. So that's in the document for you also. What's included in that? It's your number of days present, and then they take out any vacation or personal, so you're not penalized at all for taking vacation days or personal days. Any day that is more than a half a day worked is counted, so if you're out a full day, but you have to work at least a half a day, that is a present day, so you're not penalized for that. But any kind of leaves that are in there, maternity leaves or anything that you're out long-term, is accounted in your attendance. So it's a good practice, you know, to take a look at your leaves and really get a handle because that is in those numbers and it skews those numbers. So if we were looking at this year's numbers, we have multiple maternity leaves. We have probably five or six right now. So you can anticipate bigger numbers or a difference in numbers looking at next year. It's really going to impact your attendance rates. But I think, you know, it's really looking at the importance of, you know, we monitor attendance for our students, classroom attendance. It's important to be present and be engaged, just like staff. If there is a staff that's out, unfortunately, what learning is going on in that class, you know, a day here and there is fine, but if you're missing 10, 15 days a year, that really impacts the time on learning for our kids. So it's just, you know, trying to find that happy balance. We know things happen. We know people get sick. We know that they're present, but it's a data point that we need to track and be aware of. We only have so many days in the classroom. So I just think it's important data. It's out there now. It's publicly released. It went live at 9:00 AM today. They're going to be continuing to collect it as we move forward in future reportings. And, you know, I think it's a good thing. Any questions about attendance data?
You know, it's helpful information to have, you know, knowing that the state was going to be releasing this information. I hadn't seen anything in the news headlines about Webster specifically today. There were some news headlines about some of the outlier districts that had either, I'm going to call it higher, well, higher attendance rates or lower attendance rates and that kind of thing. 95.5% attendance rate for administrators is really impressive. That's pretty high. And going back to what you were saying, Mrs. Perangeli, about the emphasis on attendance, I think that's something that we collectively have had a strong focus on as it relates to our students. And it goes hand in hand, right? When students and staff are both present, that's when the magic happens, so.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I'm happy to share this FAQ. If you're interested, if anybody's interested in it, I can email it out. But it just goes through, you know, how often do we need to update our attendance? What constitutes an absent? Does a person have to miss a full workday to be considered absent? Do we report inactive employees? So it goes through a bunch of questions. It's kind of helpful if you want to dig into the data a little further. I'm happy to share it with you. But, you know, I think, you know, it's really, it's going to be meaningful. Yep.
The other thing I'll just reiterate is the important piece that you mentioned about staff who are on leave. So if we have someone who's undergoing medical treatment or has a baby or something like that, that's going to drive up our average number of absences somewhat artificially.
Yep.
Because typically, we have a long-term substitute or somebody that's carrying out the actual lessons as opposed to when it's a day here or there, so.
Correct.
That's a good point that you brought up as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Moving on, if no further questions? No? Okay. I'll move on to other updates. On Friday, November 7th, Ms. Kontos and I attended a local legislative breakfast that was held at Samuel Slater's. Senator Fatman, Representative McKenna, Representative Paul Frost, and Representative John Marcy were present there to discuss the local happenings around our towns and to talk about what's going on at the state level. They discussed their priority, and unfortunately for anybody who's interested in the Chapter 70 priority right now, that wasn't their top priority. A big priority, a big push at the legislative level is looking at affordable housing across the state of Massachusetts. So that seems to be their number-one priority right now. We did have a conversation, we had one-on-one time with them after, with local town administrator, town accountant, the finance director, I should say, Ms. Kontos and I. And we were able to discuss locally what's happening in our community, about the needs of our community, the difficulty meeting the needs with the limited funding that we get from the state. And unfortunately, they understand and they hear the problems, but they said the feedback that they're getting at the state level when discussing Chapter 70 is that they need to get through the final year of the SOA yet to see what happens, and then they're going to start a committee for Chapter 70 after that. So unfortunately for this year, it doesn't look like we may see a lot of extra relief in Chapter 70 coming from the state, as it's not going to be a top priority or push right now to revamp the formula, or that we're going to be waiting a couple of years for that to happen. So that was a little disheartening, but we continue to advocate. Yes.
Yeah. And what I'll add is, we were very transparent about what some of the immediate challenges are, but really looking at this from a long-term standpoint as well. And I will share that I just spent the last two hours listening to one of the Chapter 70 sessions, the listening sessions, and every speaker that spoke across the state, whether or not they were from the municipal side, from school district, a resident, the message was consistent across the state. The challenges that we're facing, every other community is in the same exact situation. So we can only hope that while what we heard from the legislators and what the committees are focused on right now at the State House, that perhaps the voices were loud and clear about the dire situation that a lot of communities are in and facing, and what it's doing within communities, in departments, and the challenges, the difficult decisions that people are making, and what those downstream impacts are having on the delivery of education as well as the morale of the overall staff. So it's still going on now, and I'm sure it's the same message that we're hearing, and it's very reflective of what we've already talked about.
Absolutely. And in the big picture, it's not just this year, but what's going to happen next year and the year after that, because we know it's just going to increasingly get more difficult and harder. So we'll keep advocating, we'll keep talking, we'll keep talking to our legislators, we keep looking for ways to be smarter and better at how we budget and do the best that we can to make the most out of what we have. Any questions about that? Okay. And then on Wednesday through Friday of last week, I attended the MASCE and MASs conference down the Cape. It was the first time I attended this conference. I got to spend some valuable time with my mentor, but also attended many valuable sessions. I listed some of the sessions that I attended there. And then again, as we started our Friday LS Day at the conference, the big topic in the morning was the federal fiscal update from the federal level. And we had speakers, we had a panel of speakers, the way it was run, that I've listed there for you. We had Jim Broad from Boston Public Radio, Felton Moss, the National School Board Association, Doug Howgate, the Mass Taxpayers Foundation, the superintendent from Brockton, the MASc President and Legislative Chair. And, you know, we look at our state level, but then we look at our federal level, and unfortunately, the news isn't any better from the federal. And there's a real concern, we all know, about the government shutdown, the lack of funding, looking for SNAP benefits for our families and our community members. And, you know, the thought that they have is that although it's just passed now, that they're very worried that we're going to be right back where we started on January 30th because there's still a lot of things to get through, that they don't think they're going to agree. 12 appropriation articles that they need to get through that they think is not going to be that easy. So they're afraid that we're going to be right back here. And some of the future that they're looking at is, you know, always the Title I funding comes up at every session that we're at, and looking at how it's being allocated from the federal government. And, you know, Massachusetts, I think the number they threw out could stand to lose $288 million in federal funding, which directly impacts all of our schools as we go through. So, you know, as we get into budget season, you know, we're trying to weigh, you know, how do we budget for that? What do we do? You know, do we level fund Title I? What happens should we lose Title I funding? We know there are other grants going away. So, you know, do we roll the dice and just say everything's going to work out and go status quo, or do we try and be a little conservative and roll some additional things into our budget? So there's a, you know, the climate is very difficult in politics right now for everybody, federal level, state level. So the best we can do is just to keep our heads down and work hard through it and make sure our voices are heard. So it's not a great way to start a Friday, but it has, you know, it has to be talked about and it has to be discussed, and we have to be informed, so. But I appreciate the time at the conference. So, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli.
Sorry, a little depressing. I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's news we have to hear, so. Any questions or comments from the committee for Mrs. Perangeli?
Through the chair.
Member Millitt?
I have a couple of comments, positive.
I would love to hear that.
After all that, we need some positive.
Yes, we do.
And I have to say, because I kept it, I was very excited about last week's Webster Times, where all three schools had something about the great things that our students and teachers are doing. It was so wonderful to see. And the community sees it now. And my second thing was, and I've already spoken to these students, is that I'm glad Principal Neef is here because I always go to the Veterans Parade because I just had a lot of family that was in the military, and it was nice to see. We had members of Bartlett National Honor Society march in that parade. They did a walk. It was so nice to see them, and they respectfully stayed on a brutally cold day, windy day that day, and they respectfully stayed and listened to the speeches and the awards. It was great to see them there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great.
It was nice to see such wonderful news, and I do appreciate what the principals are doing. They're really working hard at getting information out there. It takes a lot of time to write your own articles, gather pictures, send them out, but they're doing it on a regular basis, so I was happy to see.
Front page, too.
Yes. I heard multiple, so I heard from multiple people how nice it was. And it's not for lack of effort. We sent multiple things over, but it was very nice for them to recognize.
I turn the page and it'd be something else. It was just wonderful to see.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Member Regalia?
Yeah, I just want to echo that and to thank the Stonebridge Press for taking our articles that we submitted and publishing them, because I know we've been talking about it for about a part of a year now, and I just equally took it out of the mailbox, and I'm like, yes, finally. You know, seeing these programs highlighted and the work that the students are doing and the staff are doing is just, because you guys are doing such great work, and it's just another avenue to reach people, to let them know the positives that we're doing. So it was so, so awesome to see, and same thing with the National Honor Society at the parade, you know, pointing kids out and seeing the kids is awesome, too.
Thank you for those comments. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Nice to end things on a little bit of a brighter note.
Thank you.
So I agree. I mean, the headlines have been great, and it's nice to be able to shine a light on some of the great things that are happening in our schools.
Oh, in these schools.
Exactly. Yes. Yep. Great work. All right. Well, if there's no other questions or comments from Mrs. Perangeli, thank you for your updates. And the next item on the agenda is our Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Kontos.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start with the Bartlett High School renovation updates. So from Furniture, Fixtures, and Equipment, FFNE, all of our bids were received on November 10th. At the end of this week, we will be reviewing those bids that have been received, making decisions about awarding those bids, and then moving forward with the actual procurement. As I mentioned before, the plan for this is that all of that furniture would be received for Phases 1 and 2, or Sections C and B, over the summer and put in place over the summer so they're in place when students and staff return to school for the next school year. So we're really excited about seeing what came in. From what I understand, there's a few items that maybe we didn't receive some bids on, so we'll have to go out independently on those items, but all in all, I think they were very happy with what we received. When we move on to the renovation, while I have some written updates in your packet, I actually want to just speak from a little experience, because today we had our first walkthrough of Section B. And what was really nice, of course, you know, we've been seeing all of the demo work going on and all of the foundational work, but today, all the framing is up, all that rough plumbing and electrical work is up, so we're able to walk through the whole first floor. Really kind of neat to see the main office and where it's going to connect into the cafeteria, so it's really taking shape. We weren't able to go up on the second floor mainly because the staircase wasn't steady yet and the scaffolding that they had, I wasn't feeling so secure with the type of shoes I had on, so we didn't venture up there. But the second floor is further along than the first floor. They are beginning the drywall application up on the second floor, and so it's really starting to take shape. So we're going to start looking at when we can do another tour of that for both the school building committee as well as the school committee. So we'll work with the OPM to find out when we can do a walkthrough so you can start seeing it taking shape. But I think what's really exciting is really what this brings for February, and I'm sure anyone who's working in the building or in the building will be very excited because we'll have two sections connected. If you have to go to the modulars, it's just easy out, so I think February is, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and it's looking really nice, so it's extremely exciting. From an infrastructure standpoint, we did have another milestone on Veterans Day. There was a major connection to the C-section for the electrical work. What's remaining is turning on those breakers, so we're going to have two additional outages over winter break so they can continue with connecting all of those panels and those wires in there for the breaker. So that is... So that is remaining over winter break. Site work continues. I don't know if you've seen all of the walkways, but we have a lot of sidewalks now, a lot more to maintain, so. But they are wrapping that up and wrapping up the full envelope and the roof on the building. So progress continues. We are remaining on schedule with the target to move in over February break. And what's not in your report, but is ongoing, is move planning activities or just continuing to take place? And, you know, right now, what is underway is a full inventory of everything that's moving so that we have clarity on what's moving, where it's going to, what may have to go into storage temporarily, and then what items may be surplus as a result of that. So that's going on, as well as what are the needs that are going to have to happen during that timeframe? So we expect that that'll take up a lot of time over December and January and encouraging people, if they haven't started already, to start using this as an opportunity to purge those things that can be purged that you may have held on to just because you've been here for a period of time. So I think it's a good opportunity to clean things out and start fresh. So all exciting news on the renovation front. In other updates, you may recall earlier in the school year, the superintendent had announced that we launched a new platform for our employees for all of the compliant-related training that we need to do at the start of the school year. We're actually launching that same online platform. It's called ArcEd, and we're launching it for our athletic coaches for the winter season. So it's a really nice package. It's self-paced, you can start and stop it. It does all of the affidavit work and collects all the information for you, so that is launching. I think the launch is scheduled to go, and if it hasn't already gone out this week, it'll be out next week. And so we're excited about that because, again, it's a little bit more streamlined. We have everything centralized and can keep track of who's completed what and when. So really excited about that launching. And then the other thing I just want to make you aware of, as we talk about budgeting and one of the areas where certainly costs have been rising over the last several years, and that's around transportation. And so there was an allotment of money, $250,000, that was allotted for the inspector general to actually do an assessment across the state of procurement practices around bus contracts. So they're doing a deep dive into those practices to see if they can really get a glimpse of areas that could either be improved for cost savings, right? Things that we can challenge, things that we can do for safety or for efficiency. And so they've begun reaching out to districts. We haven't been contacted yet, but I know several districts have been, and they are starting to supply a lot of information to them so that they can do that evaluation. So I don't know specifically what we can expect, but I'm sure that there's gonna be recommendations at the end of this that when you go out to bid on these contracts, here's some of the things that we've learned and that you should include or you should plan for. And hopefully, one of the other things that it'll bring is maybe some level of competitiveness into the transportation phase, because as you know, certainly I wasn't here, but you may know this, is that when we do go out to bid, we only get one bid when we go out. So we are very limited in our options when it comes to transportation. So hopefully, that'll maybe change that phase for us in the future. So, and that's all I had for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Kontos. One thing I will say about the transportation piece for us here in Webster is although we get the one bid, and it would be nice to have competition, we've been really fortunate with AA Transportation. Many districts over the last several years in particular have had shortages and, you know, buses not available for students, and we, we have really been really fortunate to not have to deal with that kind of thing, so.
I agree. AA has been a wonderful vendor, and we were their first client when they started business years ago. So they have a, you know, we have a special place for them, but they are very professional, and we can always count on them. So it's been a pleasure working with them. But again, Ms. Kontos is right, typically around the state, you know, there's areas where you only get one vendor depending on where you are and, you know, prices and not always competitive.
Right.
So.
Yep. Good point. Any questions or comments from Miss Neves? I just have one. The auditorium, are we in business at the auditorium?
We are in business. We're actually going to use it for our winter concert, which will be the first big thing in our auditorium.
Oh, great. Okay. Good. I don't wanna steal your thunder, that's probably in your update, so.
It's not, actually.
Okay. All right.
Should've been.
Winter concert coming. Okay, great. Well, thank you for your updates. Well, and the next item on the agenda is the principal report, and joining us from Bartlett High School is Principal Gina Neves. Good evening.
Good evening. I'll start with a couple of our engagement opportunities that we've had and those that are coming up. This past week, we had our sportsmanship summit at Gillette Stadium. Mr. Pronto took a group to Gillette. We also had our student council fall workshop where the students attended. We had our Nichols Leadership Academy field trip. We had grade-level community meetings. And our choir also had additions at Medway High School. And there are some awards being given. I haven't been given the final list yet, so the next time we'll have those. Coming up this week for our students, we have grade-level PBIS bingo that the students were able to buy into with their Bartlett bucks. We have our next Big Brother Big Sister event at Park Ave. There's a mock DECA competition on the 20th. We have our Thanksgiving pep rally this upcoming, a week from tomorrow, and that's gonna start at 8:30 on that Wednesday morning. And then in December, oh, it did have the concert on there. Bartlett High School and Webster Middle School have a production of "Wing in It," and that's gonna take place at the middle school. We have a chemical health night coming up for our winter sports. There's the student solves competition for PLTW courses. We have Breakfast with Santa in the Grinch. We have our holiday craft fair, and we have the winter concert, which will be the first event in the auditorium. We had a couple of family events. Well, we had one on November 6th, we had our parent conferences. We moved it all to the gym this year. Everyone seemed to like that, being in one place and able to go from table to table instead of building to building. And then our other family event is actually this upcoming Saturday, we have our first meat raffle we're going to try at the Webster Fishing Game. In sports, Thanksgiving game is Bartlett versus Southbridge at home this year. Start time, I believe, is 10:15. And I'm gonna jump into a couple of other things. So Abigail Adams Scholarship. This year, we had 18 students that received this award, and they, the students need to score in the advanced category on one of the three tests, score in the proficient or advanced category on the remaining two tests, and have a combined MCAS score in these assessments that rank in the top 25% in their district. So we had 18 students this year. We spoke a little bit about attendance. I checked these last week, I didn't check them, I checked them at the time of this report. So at this time last year, we were at 90.4%. The year before, we were at 88.9% for our attendance rate. And this year, up a little bit, we're at 92.1%. Our chronic absentee rate this year, 27.3%. Last year, 31.6%, and the year before, that was 42%. And I know this number's gonna seem big, it's actually really small when you hear the other one. Tardies to date, 2,402. Last year, we're at 8,058. So that, we're getting better. Lots of things put in place. We have weekly attendance meetings with targeted interventions with our families, our grading policy with the opportunity to earn back those points, and then implemented the school-wide system for our tardies this year with very specific targeted interventions, as well as building in social probation, which is, seems to be a hook for our kids. They, they know they can't do this if they're not here on time. So those things all paired together, we have seen differences in our attendance. And we have Saturday school. One of the things I brought up at my last meeting was our, taking a peek at our freshman class and the things that we are going to put in place throughout this school year. And there's already been a change that we've seen as a result of, you know, having those monthly community meetings, a freshman seminar course, the biology, algebra, and ELA courses for the freshmen to run every day all year, daily attendance calls for absences and tardies, our academic support center in the cafeteria in Saturday schools. Our students, again, not where we wanted to be, but last year that have received one of, our freshman students that have received one or more failing grades was 63.5%. And for quarter, quarter one, we were down to 43.9. So it's, it's less, not where we wanted to be, but we're going in the right direction. Then I'm going to turn it over to two of the teachers that have come tonight, and we have Art Duke, who's going to talk a little bit about the AI pilot program that he's running in his courses, and then Michelle Bigelow, who's going to speak about some of the PLTW accomplishments.
I'll put my lights for them. A top, there should be a button on the top. And pull it nice and close. Don't be shy. STEM Week hat trick happened, and it's really, really exciting for us. On Monday, the 20th, we were surprised to win the Project Lead the Way Student Cup Award, which is an annual traveling trophy recognizing districts that celebrate and share student work. Both Bartlett and Webster Middle School participated in all three 1-8 Applied Learning Student Events last year, and along with hosting our own spring showcase. So that was like the catalyst for us to win this award. And then on Tuesday, the 21st, we traveled to the Mashup at Gillette Stadium, and our Innovation Career Pathways Advanced Manufacturing students competed with 13 other schools, and they won the $1,000 grand prize. They had, had to adapt a true robotics pilot robot to solve a warehouse challenge. They had to present their solution to a panel of industry professionals, and our students were recognized for being inclusive, supportive, organized, and very well-spoken. And then on Wednesday, we received notification of a $75,000 skills capital grant, which was part of the $13.5 million, $1 million awarded by the Healy Driscoll Administration to expand hands-on learning and access cutting-edge technology to Massachusetts schools. This will support our students in advanced manufacturing, clean energy, and Chapter 74 marketing. We are targeting to purchase some high-powered desktop workstations for the labs, laptops for the labs, a POS system for our school store, color printers, and a new heat press. That's an upgrade from the ones that they, they started out with a very basic model, and so we, we found a nice one to upgrade to.
Michelle, could you talk a little bit about the pictures? What are we looking at here?
Oh, I forgot the pictures. Yes, I'm sorry. So this is the Mashup. These are our students at the Mashup. And in the very, in the top left, that is just kind of a view. There were so many students at the school at this event, it was really cool. We have a team of students in the middle, at the top middle, working on their, solving their warehouse problem, trying to figure out the best way to come up with a solution. And what they had to do was modify the robot, and then they went over to the warehouse setup, which is, you can see the bottom three pictures, or the, the bottom two pictures on the right are the warehouse. They had to actually have people drive the robot to a station, someone had to pick the order, they had to drive it back to the warehouse landing pad, and they had to pack it exactly the way it was diagrammed in, you know, in their, on their sheets, on their pick sheets. So it was really kinda interesting, and there was a time limit, and so, and it seems really easy, but it wasn't, because the robots are catching on the carpet, and the students just had to overcome all these challenges on the fly, and they really did a great job working on it. And then in the top right, we have our students with their elevator pitch, and I watched this particular one, and these guys really nailed it. They were being hammered with questions about their design, they wanted to make sure why they thought it was balanced the way it was balanced, and they spoke so well, and they just really kept with their, their theme and their ideas, and it was, it was really cool to watch them. Here we have, on the left, we have just some samples of our advanced manufacturing classroom activities. In the center, we have, I believe that was the DECA States last year, our team that went and represented us at the States last year. And then on the right, we have some healthcare and social assistance activities going on. This is our, the middle schools, these are the teams that went to the Boston Showcase. They, we have both the medical in the red, and we have the engineering in the blue. And they all had their little projects, and they did a great job. They, all these teams also were at our student showcase in the spring. So our student showcase, we designed to be a practice for the applied learning showcase. So they get like a good, they work with us, and then when they go and there's, they, they have an incredible amount of industry professionals judging all of these. I wanna say it was 700 industry professionals judging all of the students in their projects. It's, it's amazing. It's huge. And then this activity is new. What we're trying to do is, we are working in advanced manufacturing, we're going over and working with Kate Birdie's eighth-grade class with some students, and they are mentoring. They're actually, one student is assigned to a table of eighth graders, and they are helping them halfway through their project, and then they go and they give them final feedback at the end of their project. So we're trying to do some cross-collaboration with that. They also came up, and I'll let Art talk about it, they also, the eighth graders come up and gave him feedback for his class. So that was, we're trying to just keep working this partnership with the eighth grades. And I, this is Art.
Evening, everybody. Back in the, at the end of last school year, there was an email that went out soliciting a professional development opportunity put on by the state that just talked about artificial intelligence. This is an area that I've had a little bit of experience with in my grad school years. This is an area of interest, anyway, some tech work. So I attended. And the two-day event was talking a little bit about how AI has brought, is, is here with us now in schools, how kids are using it, how teachers use it, and more importantly, how we can harness it and use it for, quote unquote, for good. What came out of that by the state was a collaboration with Project Lead the Way. Our governor decided, asked PLTW to help create a curriculum that would be aimed at middle school but applied to both middle and high school students, but originally at the middle school level, to create a curriculum to show or to help introduce and teach kids how to, or, you know, how to use AI in different ways, to learn a little bit about what goes into it, along with how to use it for school use, how to use it safely and properly, and kind of like some good ways that it could be beneficial for them. And I was chosen as one of 19, one of 24 pilot schools to go through the program. And how it works is every few weeks, they roll out some class, some sample curriculum for the teachers to work on. I introduce it to my classes, and so I'm using my two POE, my Principles of Engineering classes, are test subjects. They're working with me to, to go through the curriculum that PLTW has presented, and I provide feedback to the organization. And there's some conversations that go on between myself and the other pilot teachers, some of the heads-up, the curriculum organizers at PLTW. And we talk about what we've just went through, what we thought was good, not so good, showcase a little bit of the student sampling work. And so what we're starting to talk about, at least up until this point, we've gone over topics such as AI, our friend, which is a newsworthy item, particularly around the mental health issues that folks, students, young folks, as well as older folks, have faced, thinking that artificial intelligence and these chatbots are your friend, and some of the complexities that that brings up. We're showing, kids have delved into how to use AI to generate summaries of long passages, bringing into account the idea that you have to fact-check whatever AI happens to spit out, depending on what chatbot and learning model you use. Not everything is to be believed at 100%, and how and where to start looking. And also tie into that some responsible use as a student, as a citizen of the Internet. And now going forward, we are starting to look at some of the ways that AI can be used to generate real-time information, real-time events. used to generate real-time information, real-time events. We are starting to look at how AI can be used to, you can use prompt engineering to create, source material, to create pictures and video, and some of the legal issues and ethical issues surrounding those. And now, back to Michelle.
Will this, will that, this pilot be all year long?
This pilot is your, is for the full year. And at the end of the year, there are PLTW slated to go into the next level of, my current understanding is that this may be rolled out as an actual program for the fall, that you can sign on to purchase with our, the advanced manufacturing classes and the healthcare classes. But if not, within this fall, it's planned to be out at least.
So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up with our coming events. So on December 12th, the high school and the middle school, we have two teams of 24 students, one with the healthcare and one with the engineering, Project Lead the Way students. And we'll be competing at the middle school this year because we have no other place to compete, and they graciously allowed us to go there. And what's really exciting is we found out today, we were invited to be part of their AI Play Lab competition, or, you know, challenge for that day. So our engineering students are going to be working on developing an AI, some kind of an AI app using the Play Lab software, and they're going to be working with the Play Lab engineer specifically. And they only picked a few schools to do this. So this is, this is really kind of exciting. Then, January 15th through February 4th, we have Student Industry Connects, where we have projects that we are supposed to be doing in Project Lead the Way, and we have the students submit them for evaluation by industry professionals, and they receive written feedback on that. Then we, in the spring, we will have our Bartlett Showcase that will highlight our Project Lead the Way and Chapter 74 projects and our internships. And finally, the Applied Learning Showcase is going to be May 8th in Boston again. But we would like to invite you guys to come and see Student solves and the Bartlett Student Showcase, and we will get that date out as soon as we can figure out when it's going to be, but probably the first week in May, we're thinking. And then I just wanted to share the Chapter 74 events. This Thursday, we have the mock competition at Nichols, and then we have January 8th at Nichols, again, which is really nice because it's actually lowered the registration cost, is the DECA D9 competition. And then following that is March 12th to 14th, our state competition. And again, these interns will be at the Bartlett Student Showcase. Thank you. Oh, I forgot even, the best part. So unofficially, I would like to tell you guys about the Class of 25 gift to Bartlett High School. They purchased two rectangular ADA accessible picnic tables and two round picnic tables to put into the area right outside the cafeteria. And they, we should be receiving them in a few weeks, but they wanted to present it to the school at the pep rally. So that's our plan. So if you guys are going to come into the pep rally, they're going to be presenting these to the school. And I know there's a procedure as how to do this, but-
We'll put them on a future meeting to be accepted as a donation, but she figured, while she was here, she wanted the opportunity to share.
Thank you. I forgot about that.
So there's a lot going on at the high school.
Can I add something?
Yes, please.
So, speaking of good news and the word getting out, on October 27th, every week, the commissioner puts out a weekly email, and on October 27th, Bartlett High School was acknowledged. I don't know if you presented this in the past.
It was shared with, but please share for everyone listening.
Yeah, so the, it's number one, message from the commissioner. And he said, last week was the first time that he experienced STEM Week, and the week showcased innovation, curiosity, and collaboration. Here are a few highlights. I visited Framingham State University with members of the Healy Driscoll Administration to announce the $13.5 million in Skills Capital Grants to upgrade and expand career technical education and training programs aligned with regional workforce priorities. And we presented Bartlett High School, part of Webster Public Schools, with the Massachusetts Manufacturing Mashup Competitions $1,000 grand prize. So yay yay, way to go.
Nice work. Yep. Excellent.
To the chair.
Yep, Members Kriglia.
Yeah, on that, and I shared with Mrs. Perangeli, like some small IT or tech, like social media sites are also publishing or posting about Bartlett and you guys as well. There was a True Robotics, Inc. posted about your accomplishments. So it's not only, you know, the commissioner, local news, but it's kind of reaching a little bit. There was posted on LinkedIn, a little bit nationally about you guys and your accomplishments. So it was awesome to see. People were sending me stuff, and I'm like, what's up with this?
Well, and also related to that, and actually, Dr. Mackay, what I thought you were about to share was the, the press that you got with regard, and this may be in line with what you were sharing, Members Kriglia, with regard to the DESI press release that came out about the AI curriculum that is being implemented in Webster. And we're one of only a handful of districts in the state that are embracing that. So great work on that as well. And, you know, AI is here to stay for sure. So the more we can teach our students how to use it, the better tool it can be, and not a deterrent from learning, and more so something that can be used to augment learning for students. So kudos to you all for embracing it in a way that makes it a useful tool for our students. So, great stuff.
Any other questions?
To the chair.
Member Colares?
I just wanted to thank you so much because the amount of work I know that you guys put in outside of your school hours is really above and beyond to put these kind of things on. And it's really nice to see our students shine in this way. And clearly, it's something that they're really gravitating towards, and they're really good at, and it's giving them something to look forward to. And I think that it's really great. And I know it comes with a lot of staff hard work to put those on. So thank you for all the hard work you're putting into that.
Yeah. Seconded. Well, it looks like it's unanimous. Well, once again, thank you all for all of the countless hours. And, and I know that there's two of you all here, but there's other folks as well that are on this team, that are bringing this work to life, not only at our high school, but also at our middle school. So a big shout out to all of you and the administrators and central office, everyone who's supporting this work. It is, it is really great work that's being done. And, and like Member Colares pointed out, something that our kids are really gravitating towards. So definitely a unique way to prepare them for the future.
And it is preparing them in so many different ways, because it's not just about the mechanicals or the robotics, but they're presenting, they're speaking, they're talking, they're, you know, when you walk into those classrooms, that's what you see is the engagement and the communication, which is so important, because, you know, we know we live in a phone, right, many times. So this is being, you know, teaching them outside the box a little bit, and how to communicate and look at somebody, and be able to articulate the work that you're doing, and to support students at the middle school and help them and ask them questions. It's fun to hear some of the engagement between the high school kids and the student at the middle school, talking about the projects and the excitement about it. So very well-rounded for our kids. So it's, it's great to see, and it's very much appreciated.
Agree. Yeah, and going off of that, I actually was fortunate enough to be a chaperone for the showcase in Boston. And it was literally hundreds of industry professionals that were walking through the showcase, interacting with our students. And they were, our, our school was, was very, very well represented at, at that level. And it was clear that many of the industry professionals that were evaluating the student work were, were really blown away by some of the work that was put out by our students. So it was really nice to be able to see that, and to see the look on the students' faces when they got off the bus in the city and walked into the New Balance Building to showcase their work, just the excitement and the pride that undoubtedly, you know, was, was present that day was great. So, all good things.
You're welcome to chaperone again.
Well, let me know the date. I'd be glad to. Thank you for being here. You know, speaking of time outside of your normal work hours, you're here this evening too, to share all this with us. So, thank you. Let's see here. Principal Neves, is this part of your report still, or are we coming back to you to, to move on with, with more information for us?
Thank you.
Thank you again.
That's all I have to-
That's all you have for your report? Any questions or comments for Principal Neves? No? All right. Well, great. Thanks. I can't believe the change in the attendance data, whether it be the attendance data, the chronic absenteeism, I think for me, is the, the figure that really has been not quite halved, but it's been significantly cut down. So, and the tardies too, I mean, the tardies, that is a big number, but not compared to the previous number. So, you know, it, it takes a while to turn these types of things around, but from two years ago to today, there's a significant change already. So, and that's, I'm sure, not without a significant amount of work on everyone's part, too. Do we have any updates, student rep updates? I know Aiden couldn't be here this evening, but did you have anything you wanted to share there?
So what I read at the beginning with the student and family engagement, the family event-
Perfect.
-sports was his.
Yes. Okay, great. Well, thanks, and we wish him well. The next item on the agenda under Old Business is a monthly report on fundraising applications. As a reminder, it is the role of school committee to review fundraising activities, but we don't approve them. Those are approved at the building level. And lots of fundraising activities going on with the 18 to 22 program, which is great, some plants for sale, and some cooko bombs.
And they start those plants from seedlings. So, yeah.
Wow.
They start them, so.
I'll need to catch up with you all. I'd like to purchase some. And, and also some gobblegrams and some other fun things happening around the holidays as well. So, great stuff there. Any questions or comments from the committee with regard to the fundraising activities? All right. Hearing none. And moving right along, the next item on the agenda under New Business is the update regarding adult education. Good evening, Ava.
I'm using this mic because it's easier. Hello, everyone. I just want to say, first and foremost, I am so proud to be a part of this district, like, listening to everything. First of all, Nathan, give it up for Nathan again, but the improvements that you're making in the high school, you're not where you want to be, but you're getting there, right? And then AI, and then I felt like just an immense sense of pride sitting here. So there's a lot of good work. I hope I can add to that today. So I'll start. So my name is Ava Landry. I am the Director of the Adult Education Department. I do want to start by providing a brief overview of the program and what our program looks like now. So we offer valuable, high, high-quality educational services to the adults of Webster, but also Southern Worcester County. And we do that by offering no-cost high school equivalency classes and English classes for adult English learners. We teach digital literacy, civics education, career readiness, and we also provide wraparound services through our advisor, as well as through referrals to local area agencies, such as Mass Hire, Mass Ability, Department of Transitional Assistance. What I think sets our program apart, structures that we have. So we really make it a goal to try to meet our students where they are. I mean, I try to go to the gym after work. I don't always get there, okay? So going to class after working an eight, 10-hour shift is really, really hard. So we try to meet them where they're at. So right now, we provide two daytime classes at Gladys E. Kelly Library, Monday through Thursday. One is a high school equivalency class, and one is a beginning ESOL class. And at night, actually, right now, we have classes. We offer high flex classes, in-person classes, and remote classes at the beginner, intermediate, and the advanced levels. And we also have a self-paced class, which, again, I think kind of sets us apart. So that is a do-it-at-your-own-pace for students who have childcare issues, transportation issues, health, mobility, things like that. I do like to say that K-12 helps the babies, and we help the parents, and that together we can kind of collaborate to promote family literacy, hopefully break some generational curses in the process. Curses is strong, but I think y'all know what I mean, right? So I think, I probably shouldn't say this, but one of my favorite shows is Monk with Tony Shalhoub, and the theme song for that show is "It's a Jungle Out Here." And I think now more than ever, it's been a jungle for our students. So our primary goal is to not add to the jungle, but help them clear it out, right? So that's what guides everything that we do in our program. As for updates, we do have two new hires, Heather Dennis, who is the Assistant Director, and Christina Carpenter-Zaveska, who is the lead teacher. They started in August and September, respectively, and funding. We are officially level-funded in November, but we are officially level-funded. We just got news of it around three weeks ago. So the last time that I spoke at school committee, I told you that we only had 80% funding. And so in July, July, August, we got 96% of our funding, and we finally got the last 4% of our funding at the end of October. So we will be adding a new class with that funding, actually, two new classes. One is going to be a transition class for ESOL students who want to get their high school equivalency, and then another one is going to be a beginning ESOL class. Excuse me. Right now, we are over-enrolled for ESOL. We have a very, very long waitlist, which is why we're adding those two new classes. The demand is very high. And at ABE, we're holding steady around 84%. We're trying to bump up our outreach by calling individual businesses, like, hey, do you have staff members who may want to get their equivalency, things like that. But ABE has historically been a struggle with enrollment, so we're just still plugging away at that. As for measurable skill gains in our student progress, we have already gotten six GEDs and HICEs for the school year. So it's November. I'm very proud of that, very proud of that. And we also have seven partial high school equivalencies. So those are students who have obtained one of their subject tests out of their GED or HICEs. So they're on their way. And we also, we get measurable skill gain with that as well. One of our students who got their GED, they have enrolled in QCC. So we have one post-secondary in education training placement. Their major is going to be business, so we're very proud of her. And we have successfully helped three students gain employment. One student is, had a multitude of part-time jobs, was able to find a full-time job. So now he doesn't have to work 70 hours. He can only work 40, and he still gets paid more. So that's great. We do have a site visit scheduled for Thursday, December 4th. That is going to be for our daytime programming, and then that's also going to focus on our program design. And then we also have a multicultural and student recognition night that is scheduled for Tuesday, December 16th. And so that is essentially all of the updates for adult ed. Arms are hard, but we persist, you know?
Thank you, Ava, for your updates. Any questions or comments from the committee?
To the chair.
Member Colares?
I was just going to say, thank you. It looks like you're doing an amazing work. And I think what you touched upon, which was the most important, was that it's like family literacy, because it is a family affair. What you're doing strengthens the community. When the community's strong, the schools are strong. So you're playing a big role in that, and you should be proud of the work you're doing over there. It sounds like people are really taking hold of it and doing great things with it. So that's amazing.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And one of the things I appreciate most is the creativity in the classes, because it's not a one-size-fit-all. Not every, you know, two nights a week just doesn't work for everybody. So you've been very creative in how you can meet the needs of your students to help them succeed, because it is difficult, you know, working, maintaining families, sometimes single, you know, single homes. It's very hard. So you've been very creative and outreach-ing and supporting the family. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ava.
I too want to thank you, Ava. Your positivity and student-centeredness is really what resonated for me. for me, meeting people where they're at, acknowledging that it can be challenging to make it sometimes to class, even though it's only by being present that the results will come. And I couldn't agree with more with Member Calera with regard to strengthening the whole community. You said K-12 helps the babies, and you help the grown-ups. But by helping the grown-ups, you're also helping the babies, you know? So, thank you for that.
Like wheels of a bicycle, right? K-12, adult ed, you kind of just steer it. I have a lot of analogies.
Well, thank you for your updates.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ava.
The next item on the agenda under new business also is policy ADDA, background checks.
Okay. So, I will go through just a little bit. Do you want me to run right down as I go through? We'll start the first one.
I think that would be okay. It's a first reading on all of these policies. So, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thanks.
So, on ADDA, this is a policy that we did have. You can see the original copy is in there. The last time it was looked at was 2014, and it just had the initial couple of paragraphs on background checks. Since then, there has been updates about fingerprinting and sorries in here. So, you can see there's a lot more data. The first three paragraphs are here. Those haven't changed. That is consistent with the policy, but everything after that has changed. These are directly from MASC. This is our practice. We have been doing all of this. It just was not in writing. So, it's good to make sure our policy's up to date, and we're actually have something written and formal. So, that's ADDA. Are there any questions about that? No? Okay, moving on to ADC. This is our first reading. Again, as you... Oh, what did I do here? I think we added, yes, this was updated a little bit to add some additional tobacco products in here. So, the last time it was over a year ago, and we updated this policy on ADC. Tobacco use in school by staff, that was not updated since 2003. It hasn't changed that much. And just so you understand what I'm trying to do as I come forward with policies. So, as you know, you know, this is something that I've taken on this year. I have a master sheet now that I'm keeping with all of our policies listed on one sheet. My hope is that once we start getting through that, I will share it with you. It'll be online. We'll have a running list of all of our policies, when they were reviewed, when they were updated, the year they were updated. And that is something that we'll be able to maintain and see all at one point. And how I'm approaching this is then when I go to a policy that I see that needs to be done, it also references a couple other policies. So, I'll take this, and I'll say, does this need to be updated? Look at that. Make any adjustments necessary. And then I go look at the policies that it references. I pull those to say, do those need to be updated? And I do that. So, that way, when I'm looking at this, it hopefully completes the package as I'm doing that. So, we're looking at everything at once. So, that's the approach that I'm taking. If it ever does affect something that some of these policies that we go through might require a working group or somebody to look at that, and just might not be as quick and easy to come, I might hold off on that one policy. But I'm making those notes as I go through now, so we know what's being done. So, this was updated to include, as you can see, it's changed. None of our policies included the e-cigarettes and things like that. So, all of it's been updated to include that. The next one was also teaching about alcohol and drugs. So, that, again, was not done since 2003. It was updated off of MASC's policy to include e-cigarettes and the teaching that we do in our schools. The next one, IHBEA. We had a very old policy on that. Again, that was 2003. And as you know, our policy for ELL education has definitely changed since then. So, that was updated to reflect current times. As you can see, the language is very outdated. It was just not even close to what we do anymore. So, that's been changed. We also have our homeschooling policy, IHBG in here. This policy we had, it was, actually hasn't changed much back to 2003. But what did change is down the bottom, there is one section, and this has come, this has come up for us before, which is why I brought it here. For homeschool students, they have a right to participate with the superintendent's permission in activities in the school department that we have. So, there's a paragraph here now that says, "The district reserves the right to allow enrolled students to have precedent or priority over homeschooled students with regards to placement on sports teams, activities that have limited enrollment." So, there have been a couple situations that have come up where it's been very limited enrollment in the activity. And, you know, and we did not want to bump somebody that is present attending our schools every day with a homeschool student. So, that, this gives us the right to do that. Other than, you know, other than that, we welcome our homeschool students in. And then, the exhibit is just a copy of what our exhibit is, what our form is that parents need to fill out for our homeschooling. And you can see that differs from the procedures and stuff that was there before. The next two that we have, the one that I don't see in here is, did I miss it? Okay. IHBH is a brand-new policy. The next three that we have are brand-new to us in Webster. The first one is the middle school pathway exploration policy. This is how we are allowing kids to look at CTE schools, like Bay Path. So, this is our process and procedure. You know, we are required to have a policy submitted in to the state. That is what I presented to you, I believe it was at our last meeting. I had asked for a waiver. So, we have until the end of December to do that. So, we'll meet that deadline. This is our first reading on that. So, this is brand-new to Webster. And basically, we had the procedure in place. This is a lot of what we were doing. It's just writing it down and putting into practice. So, we've been doing a lot of these things. It's just having it written down as a policy. The next two that we have, and I don't know if Gina, you want to go through, do you have them with you? No. So, we also need to have a competency determination policy and a graduation requirement policy. Basically, we were here with our, was it in the fall, spring? When were we here? In the spring, right? Looking at our competency determination and graduation requirements. I don't think a lot has changed in here. If anything, the appeal procedure, right? So, we added an appeals process in here. That was something that changed. So, you can see that added in here. And then, we've updated our graduation requirements to meet our new courses and scheduling. Are there any questions about those?
I went through the chair. Remember, is Greg there?
So, the graduation requirements, is that driven by what's required by the state, though? Or is that, like, unique to us as a school?
It's unique to us.
Yes.
But we go by the guidelines of Mass Corps.
Right.
So, like, because I didn't step foot in an art room when I was in high school. It wasn't required, to my knowledge, to have art credits. It was just an elective. But now, it's required to have art credits, or is that unique to us?
It's recommended by Mass Corps to have.
Because I would, I would fail, because I'm not creative. You know what I mean?
They want exposure to all of it.
Right. And that's what, like, irked me a little bit about college, because like, I wanted, I wanted to go to college for one thing, but then I had to take, like, a language, or I had to take, I'm like, I don't want to take a language. I don't want to do anything with French, or Polish, or Spanish. So, I was like, can I not be more specific to what I want? But I, I understand the well-roundedness in high school. But, um, yeah, no, I, that's, that's new to me. When I was looking at it, I'm like, why, why are we making kids take art if they want to do business?
It's any of the arts. So, it's your musics, your arts. So, it doesn't have to be an art, a drawing or a painting course.
Right.
Also count.
Okay. Oh, that makes more sense.
Drama, yeah, a drama course.
That makes more sense.
Although unified.
Arts. Got you. And does the language, does it have to be a foreign, it has to be like a Spanish or a French? It can't be like a, it could be...
We only have, well, we could offer through ingenuity, but we only have Spanish now.
Oh, Spanish now.
But we've had students take the courses on ingenuity with a different language.
Got you. Okay, cool. All right.
And, you know, sort of going off of that, I think, and maybe even the other side of that coin, is, you know, requiring students to do some of these things, it does push them out of their comfort zone, and may open them up to possibilities that they never considered before. The personal finance piece is a great addition, I think, for, for anybody coming out into the world to be able to have some literacy with regard to personal finances. So, it looks good to me. And I realize with MCAS going away as a competency determination, it was left to individual districts largely to create competency determinations, which is no small undertaking. So, yeah. So, lots here. One thing that I'll say with, with regard to the, these are first readings of these policies. So, when we come, this is our first opportunity to look at these policies and deliberate about them and that type of thing. And then, at our, our next meeting will be our second reading?
Yes. We'll do second and vote at the next, because as you know, we looked into not having to do, there's three requirements we need to meet, but we don't have to do it over three separate meetings. So, we can vote them in at the next meeting. So, that'll be our process moving forward. We can have the first reading, discussion, exposure to it. We can discuss again at next meeting and then vote.
Right. If there's no edits or feedback or anything like that. So, now is a good opportunity for us to offer any feedback. And obviously, we can consider it leading up to the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Member, member Calera?
I just have a question about the community service. How are you supporting that kids, you know, are getting community service, or what kind of things they can do, or just supporting them in that idea?
So, we offer a lot throughout the year ourselves, and we have different people and places and businesses that come to us, or events that come to us, and we offer them to the students throughout the school year. In addition to all of our events that we hold, we offer that. We just say it has to be done outside of the school hours.
There's also engagement with the other schools, which is nice, too, to help some of the, you know, that relationship between the schools. So, we often have students who will go down there and work events, or maybe PTO events or certain things, and get credit for community.
And who keeps track of that data?
Our counselors and the guidance counselors.
Perfect.
As well as our senior advisors.
Great. Thank you.
Sheets you have to sign off on.
Yes.
All right.
Great. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding the first reading of these policies?
I was just confused on the graduation one, why it still had MCAS competency on it.
Was it the equivalent of the?
IKF.
That's the graduation requirements. That's a good point. It does have...
It still had MCAS.
As a graduation requirement. Good catch.
No.
That, that means they have to have the competency. They have to either have passed the MCAS or have proven competency for the test. It says, must pass the MCAS competency determination. So, it's not, it's not saying, cut past the MCAS test.
Is, is it me with the language, or is it confusing language?
Because it sounds like you have to take MCAS.
So, or, like, perhaps if I'm understanding you correctly, it would be must pass the MCAS, or, or demonstrate competency in whatever areas, because the competency determination is that next policy, right?
The way that it reads is that, that it's the equivalent of what was the MCAS, that students have to pass the classes.
Mm-hmm.
That would have, that teach the standards that traditionally were tested in MCAS. So, for...
It's still saying on there that they have to pass the MCAS competency.
Right. Competency determination. I agree that the language might be a little bit confusing. You're correct. But I think also, the way that this, yeah. So, this is...
Yeah, we'll look at the wording for that one.
Right. Yeah, maybe we can look at rewording that, and that's...
I think it's just the way it's worded.
Policy IKF, the graduation requirements.
I think...
Because it sounds like they have to take the test.
It does. But it also includes, these kids that are graduating in '26 took the MCAS, and they had to take the MCAS then. So, I think it probably, I think we can work with the wording. But for a little while, we're going to have a student body, a student population that, two years ago, when they were taking the MCAS, it was required. And so, so, without dismissing the fact that they took the MCAS and passed it to pass, and/or its equivalent, I think we should, we should definitely take a look at the wording. But we're in that kind of transition phase with the language.
Yep. Yeah, and I read it as what you're describing. Maybe even saying something like, "All students must meet the competency, the criteria for competency determination as outlined in policy IKFE."
Yeah.
That works.
Through the chair?
Member Calera?
Will the MCAS count at all? Like, if the kids are taking it and they get proficiency, does that help them with, like, the...
That says they've met the competency.
That says they met their competency, so it's either or. So, that's how, okay, just to make sure. That's how it's worded. It's like...
And it's still valid for all the scholarships that they, it's still counted.
So, they have to say, they have to take the test once while they're with us, but they can take it more if they want to.
So, it's like, either they pass the MCAS, or they pass the competency?
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, I think if it's just worded different, so it says it like that, that would make sense to me.
That's another good point. Okay.
We'll fix that for next time.
Great.
Thank you.
Great feedback. Any other questions or comments with regard to this, or any of the other policies that we've gone through? All right. Then, thank you. Lots of work being done. And by the way, Mrs. Prangjali, the process that you're undertaking to review and update these policies is amazing. And it's no small feat to... Any school district has dozens is an understatement of policies that need to be adhered to, and the fact that some of these haven't been touched for, for many, many years. And they're being organized and updated with, it's, it's, it's a lot of work. So, thank you for that.
It is. And I whined a lot, and really didn't want to do it. But now that I'm doing it, it's a mission. And it's actually a really good practice for me, honestly. I'm learning a lot as I'm reading through the policies. You know, you know, they live in a book, and that book sits on the shelf. And it's not until something comes up, then you say, oh, maybe I need to go look at the policy, and you grab it. And then, you're going down that rabbit hole. So, this is really an actual great practice to start going through and look at these things and say, and just a refresher, and to say, oh, I didn't realize, you know, am I following that policy? Am I following it? Making sure we're doing what we say we're going to do. So, it's actually very good. It's a very good process. And it is a lot of work, but I don't think I'll completely get through the book this year. But we'll be in a much better state. And at least, we are going to have a full book, at least with everything organized in one place, not only there, but on the website. So, at least when things do need to update, we know exactly what needs to be updated, and we know exactly what needs to be replaced. And we can do that. So, there'll be a process from now on, which is great. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, the next item on our agenda is to enter into executive session according to Mass General Law 30A, section... Oh, excuse me. I'm ready to go into executive session, but we better finish our new business before we do that. The next item on the agenda under new business is the acceptance of donations. And these are hats from a knitting group?
Yes. So, I'm happy to say that our former, one of our former school committee chairs, Mr. Michael McCarron, reached out to me. He has a group that really wanted to do something for the school. And after some conversation back and forth, we talked about, you know, at Park Ave, there could be need for maybe hats or gloves for the kids who are going out for recess in the wintertime. So, the knitting group, this is a donation from the knitting group at... So the knitting group, this is a donation from the knitting group at the library. The knitting group consisted of Jeannie McCarr, Karen Mosley, Patty Funnier, Pat Zojak, Regina Fish, Barbara Hackett, Nancy Powers, Betty O'Connor, and Kathy Grevay. And they meet down the library, and they knitted the most adorable hats for our students over at the elementary school. So I will just show you a few of what they have for our students. Different hats, scarf. These are all handmade by this wonderful group of ladies, and it, I just, I can't thank them enough. It's going to make some young kids very happy, and I hope, I mean, just look.
Those are adorable.
Just look.
Really nice.
So it's pretty awesome and pretty amazing, and I just wanted to bring them to you to show them off and to say thank you publicly for all their work and effort to support our students and our schools, and I know they'll be probably doing more, but we appreciate it so much, so I just wanted to say thank you, and hoping that we can accept the donation of hats and scarves for our students at the elementary school, and we appreciate it.
Well, a special thank you to Mr. McCarr for joining us with this group and for the group for, for making those beautiful hats and donating them. Any questions or comments from the committee? Here, now I'll entertain a motion to accept the donations as presented. There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. And now, next on the agenda is I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session according to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy for negotiations with personnel. In this case, it's our instructional assistance group, and we will reconvene in an open session.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, motion passes. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are back from our executive session, and we are in the process of, we've just reviewed the instructional assistance contract, and we'll entertain any questions or comments about that contract, if there are any. No, I would just like to say that this, the process of reviewing the existing contract and negotiating a new contract with our paraeducators was eye-opening for me as a school committee member and as a parent, and I really appreciated the dialogue that we had as a group. I was able to learn a lot more about the day-to-day life of someone working as a paraeducator in our district, and always had a very strong appreciation for the work that they do with some of our most vulnerable students, and really appreciate some of the information that they shared with us throughout this process. So I want to thank them for not only the group that came to the table with us to negotiate this contract, but also all of the members of, of that unit and the work that they do to support all of our students and staff. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the instructional assistance contract for the period of July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And the next item is the review, transfer, sending of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes, motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.